This is a meeting of the Plainfield Planning Commission. On, what's the day's date? October 20th, 2025. So we'll call the meeting to order. And the first item on the agenda is approve the minutes from the last meeting, which go all the way back to the second meeting on September 15th, because we didn't have a quorum on our last meeting. So can, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes?
Yeah.
A second?
A second.
Okay, all those in favor? Oh, first any discussion of the minutes? Okay, all those in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, Karen's joining the meeting, so we'll give her a minute to hop on. Hello, Karen? You've got the little thing over your microphone. It shows up as you're being muted, Karen. And not moving, so we're not sure what her connection's like. She may just join on with audio. Oh, she's there. Can we hear her now?
Yes.
Okay.
For some reason, my, well, it's always the same. The computer doesn't like what I'm doing. It's a Google Chrome and they're not a big fan of Zoom.
Oh, okay. Well, we got you. You seem to be working now. So we approved the minutes from the September 15th meeting, because we didn't have a quorum last week or last meeting. So going through the agenda, I tossed on that this, this, I just, I called it a sidewalk expansion, but it's really a connected pathway to Goddard and all the way out to the co-op, which is just beyond the town border and it doesn't seem to be an issue with getting approval from East Montpelier. So we're just going to, I mean, all I need to do is sign the, the grant proposal like the select board did. But I just wanted to run that by the planning commission as a whole. So if, I think everybody got to look at it and it's basically a grant to extend a, I didn't quite see how it, you know, is it probably crush gravel pathway? And the alignment is yet to be determined. Because you got to get through that ravine at Goddard and you got to get through, can't run it right next to Route 2, because Route 2 is pretty narrow. So all that needs to be discovered in an exploratory thing. But the concept, we're just approving the concept or the grant to make that connectivity, which certainly getting out to Goddard and through Goddard would be a great. And if we can, somebody can walk or ride their bike safely to the co-op, that'd be great too. So any, any, any members have a problem with me signing that? Because I'll just sign it, I've just signed the same way the select board signed the application.
Yeah, no, that looked good to me.
Okay. Okay, I think I'll stop with the town office. I think that's all I got to do. Then we did, the next item is to formally vote on the changes that we agreed on in that September 15th planning commission meeting. And I could read them out, but does everybody have a copy of that? And we could do that in one, in one vote. Because we all agreed in principle for those and we could just, to do it a little formally, a motion to approve all those changes that we agreed upon on the September 15th meeting. Is that, everybody comfortable with that?
Yeah, well, okay, well, I, there was this, there was one other one that we didn't really talk about that I, I thought addressed one of Karen's concerns about, should we do that separately or?
Yeah, why don't we do that separately? So this, all these are sort of done. So just a motion to approve all those agreed upon changes. We, we need a motion?
I'm just, I'm just kind of reviewing.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine. Well, we can still have the motion in the second and then we can discuss it.
Sorry, what is the, what's the motion?
Well, the motion is to just approve rather than agree the changes in the September 15th minutes. All those, you know, add language to marshfield development, you know, the whole list of them in the minute. And we are all agreed to them, but I think a vote to approve would just say, we put those behind us and we can move ahead with it. And we can, we can go ahead and make changes and discuss it as part of the motion. But to discuss it, we probably should have the motion on the floor.
So this is a motion to discuss?
Motion, well, the motion is to approve all the agreed upon changes from the September 15th minute. And then once, once the motion and a second is made, we can discuss them. I'm doing the moderator Robert's rules of order thing here.
I guess I would rather read them and possibly discuss them before approving them.
Okay, we can do that.
I'm just, it's been a while, so I'm just kind of.
Okay, that's fine.
I'll stop, just doing a quick review.
Sure. You want to go ahead and do that? Read through them? Allowed? Okay.
Yeah. So I'll just skip to the agreed heading. So applicant definition, which is the owner of land or property proposed to be subdivided or developed in accordance with these regulations and/or a person duly authorized by the owner of the land to be subdivided or developed. The permit will be attached to land of the current and future owners. That just really cleaned up language. I don't think it fundamentally changed anything.
Yeah, it just made it clear.
Agreed, change all references subdivider to applicant, right? And then person definition, individual, corporation, partnership, association, or other organizations, unincorporated organization, trust, or other legal or commercial entity, including a joint venture or affiliated ownership, a municipality or state agency, and individuals and entities affiliated with each other for profit consideration, or any other beneficial interest derived from the development of land.
Hey Karen, could you, could you mute yourself? Because some background noise kicking in a little bit, so just let, let, so we can hear Jesse a little clearer. We're relying on his thesbian talents here. Go ahead, Jesse.
Right, my speed thesbian talents.
Yeah, clear enunciation.
Delete preliminary plat and minor subdivision from subdivision process. And we replace that with sketch plan and final plat, is that what it was?
Yes. Yeah.
Section 3.19 steep slopes changed to roads, infrastructure, and buildings that are proposed for slopes exceeding 15% for 15 vertical feet and 100 horizontal feet and up to 25% shall require licensed engineers designed for stormwater control, earth retention, building stability, and erosion control. Agreed, first official DRB review would be the sketch plan review. Sketch plan review would be warrant hearing and a butters, et cetera, notified. Permit application and fee would be submitted before sketch plan review. Agreed, add language from marshfield regulations regarding the subdivision and POD relationship. 1100 coordination of planning and development POD review. Subdivision applications for POD shall be reviewed as major subdivisions. Additional use procedural requirements pertaining to each respective review process on that POD shall meet the review standards set forth in the Marshfield Town Zoning Regulations as well as subdivision standards defined in these regulations. Agreed, add language from Marshfield subdivision regulations about professional advice to DRB. 1090 professional advice to DRB may seek professional advice to review various aspects of an application. For major subdivision only, the professional fees associated with this shall be paid for by the developer or subdivider. Why didn't we use the term developer or subdivider there rather than applicant, you know?
Okay, that's a, that's, you know why? Because it's marshfields language.
I probably should say applicant, right? Keeping in our now fairly precise definitions.
Yep, okay, so we'll change that to applicant.
Agreed, leave exempt subdivision regulation as is. All agreements read in this, where this discussion needs more study to be better defined parameters.
And then the rest is just basic minutes.
Okay, yeah, well, that, that edit, I mean.
With that change, and I think that came apart, we just copied and pasted out of there. Okay, so we read through them, made one minor change. And with that one minor change, we can have a motion to adopt that language. Go ahead, Jesse, you can make the motion.
All right, I'm going to adopt the language in the September 15 notes with the one change to developer or subdivider under the professional advice section and that'll read instead applicant.
Excellent. Okay, and a second?
We'll probably also change some marshfield to plainfield in the one.
Yes, yeah, yeah, right, right, right.
Oh, yeah, I don't know, it's like that.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so we have a second?
Yeah, a second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
All right.
Okay.
Hi.
Okay, thank you, Karen. We got that. And then David, do you have the language that you were mentioning about the first point of contact?
Yeah.
Sounds like something from ET.
Applicant first point of contact. Prior to submission of a formal subdivision application, a potential applicant and/or unauthorized representative shall meet with the zoning administrator to discuss the subdivision application process and general requirements for submission of an application. No testimony regarding a potential application shall be taken and no findings shall be made. No formal decision will be prepared or issued based upon the informational meeting. The applicant shall have no vested rights of approval based on an informal meeting.
And where did this language come from? Just for the, okay.
My thinking was just that it made formal the process that Karen had, you know, talked about, that she wanted people to talk to her before they got too far in their thinking.
As soon as possible, the sooner the better. Yeah, I think that's great language. And could, could you send me that in an email? So I get it, you don't have to do it now, but so I get it accurately in the minutes. And then can we, so can we have another motion to approve that language that David suggested?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve it.
Yeah, and a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the language? Does that serve a good purpose for you, Karen?
Yes.
Okay, then without, unless there's any further discussion, all is in favor?
All right.
Hi, okay. We got that done. Thank you for sending it, David. I got it. The next item is a planning grant. I was discussing with Ross Colgate and she was out on vacation. I got to get in touch back with her. You know, the town plan needs some updating. We could fill, David, if you want to fill Jesse and Karen in on the Plainfield Forward meeting that we both attended, a lot of discussion about, you know, the town meeting needs to get updated because it needs to get described, the town we're living in, not the town we lived in pre-flood.
Yeah. I think where the, where the, where the planning commission really came in was that there was discussion about quantifying and figuring out what the town really, where the town really wants to go in terms of housing. So how much growth? Anything special about the growth? Any, you know, is, is it worth it to look at different locations or changing? These are not my thinking. This thing became oddly to me. Changing any of the regulations to facilitate growth. You know, I think that, that was the area that I most heard that updating the town plan would be useful. Having the discussion in particular would be useful. There was also some discussion about just getting out information about demographics, what exists, both housing and age groups, all that stuff. I don't, I don't know if that's part of the town plan or not, but.
Well, yeah, there is a demographic section in the town plan. Both, both David and I may delete to join the housing committee. My, my, my promise was to try to do some of the inventory and mapping in terms of how, how, how structures interface with the flood and river corridors. And since I can do that remotely and have reasonable access and knowledge about that, I'm, I'm willing to put a little bit of grease on that, on the housing committee wheel. And David has been working on renovating, you know, on projects of renovating, moving, looking at some of the underused housing is the euphemistic way to describe the.
And, and, and working plus working hopefully in partnership with Goddard.
Yep.
And, and, and looking at sites in the village that might be available.
Right. And I, and I got Francis Rose rolling back, they're probably, they might just get to the next meeting to work on the goals for the housing committee. So we may not, they may not even form yet. So anyway, the, the Plainfield Forward forum was, on the housing side, was really interesting. A lot of good information about, you know, one of the things that came out is where, you know, how, how much capacity the wastewater system has, and it's between 150 and 200 new units. You know, so clearing up that information, because at some point, there were some, you know, talking about some, a lot of projects in that, in the village and saying, you know, there is, there is, you know, there is sort of a limit to what you can do because of the wastewater. Either at a certain point, you need to rebuild it, which you probably have to do in 20 years anyway. But the planning, you know, the town plan looks out five, 10, longer term. So the town plan, if, if, if we, it would, the previous couple of town plans were really homegrown. You know, people in town contributed a lot, but now people in town are doing a lot. You know, there's a lot of, a lot of people have committed to stuff. So I, I was always in the opinion, you know, it was my opinion that it was a more useful strategy to have the town involved in the writing. But because there's so, all the people who would be doing that are already involved in stuff, maybe it's time to have a consultant that gets paid, you know, 20, 30,000 bucks would, the grant would be. The one thing they can do is take all the information from the, all the previous forums. Because that's essentially what the town plan does, is it reaches out to people and say, what do you think? And synthesizes that and then make some proposals based on that information. So in some ways, a lot of the work has been done, the outreach work has been done. And the framework is sort of set and then, you know, people can contribute updates. One idea I had and I, is to, because we have the technology now, is to do some video interviews with some people in town and embed them into this bigger document where, you know, we could describe the flood. But if Michael Billingsley sat down for 15 minutes and described it in a little video conference and that got embedded as, as in the appendices, and some of the older people in town did that, it would just be kind of interesting. I talked to, you know, I think that's possible. Just something to play around with, add a little more interest to the town plan.
I like that. I think that would also be potentially a useful format to facilitate a discussion about growth.
Yep, yep.
You know, and lifestyle in Plainfield and how God relates, how, you know, what, yeah, all that stuff.
Yeah, right, right. Have 10 or 10, 10 or 15 and you wouldn't have to watch them. But they'd be there as sort of an educational sort of thing, because we have this technology.
Participate, it wouldn't normally participate.
Yeah.
If they, you know, were invited to sit on a one-on-one basis and talk about.
Yeah, but just an idea. Anyway, I haven't gotten back in touch with Ross. We may not make the guideline for this, but these things come around often. So if we didn't get this grant proposal in in time, we'll just start working on it on a, on a, maybe working with the Central Region Planning Commission to get more information together, to put that up and have, and start having discussions within the commission and maybe get one or two more members, who knows, that we could look at the, the bigger issues of the town and we could revisit. We did what's called a build-out study, where the region planning commission took our existing zoning, five acre, you know, five acre zoning, 300 feet of road frontage all through the town, half acre zoning in where it's non-sewage and it was quarter acre zoning with sewage, and put a, 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 a single-family residence on all those properties and built out everything the zoning would allow under the, what was the old regulations. It was just a, a thought experiment, but it was kind of interesting. And the zoning, the current zoning plops down houses along the road at uniform lengths. It's pretty boring, which is why like PUDs get a greater sense of interest, because they're, they're more flexible. So, and we did discuss PUDs in the housing section, I mean, in the part of the forum. So that's, I'll, I'll follow up with Ross. I think she's back from her vacation and we'll see where that goes.
Well, yeah. What would the consultant aspect of that look like if there was a grant?
You, you, yeah, there are people who just write, I mean, you look at Wade Field, all the, the, most of those town plans are written by consultants. They're very fancy, they're glossy. But I, I wonder how close they are to the actual people in the town versus the people, the people who show up at meetings, which are two different populations. And, and the other thing is, I, we, it was really hard to find the, the skillset to just put the document together, because I don't have it. We don't have, there's nobody in the planning commission that's going to do that. So it's, it's just hard to, you know, that, just doing that was, was, would be a big help.
Would it be a consultant within the Central Mountain Regional Planning Commission? Or would it be someone in like a private, you know, consulting firm?
It, it would probably be somebody in the private, you know, we could, or we could hire the, you know, we, the last couple ones, we had a set amount of money to do the plan and the region planning commission did it. They're really busy, so I'm not sure how that would work. But anybody who's in this sort of world has a reasonable level of competency to make the documents and, and collate data. And it's probably easier now with AI and, 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 and you could do it pretty easily. We, we interview them, we might get, we might want to get three proposals to look at. I think the planning commission would be in charge of hiring and talking with these people. So it's down the road, it probably just ate through the winter and we'd start putting stuff together, you know, through the summer and come out, I mean, could come out, but concurrently, we got to do the subdivision regulations. So we don't want to eat, put too much on our plates at once. But it just, this is something we need to, if, if we were to get the subdivision bam, done, approved, this would be our next task. So we can chew gum and walk and sort of, sort of anticipate and think about, like, you know, five years down the road, what is the housing? It ties in very much with what we're doing with the subdivision, but we have a longer outlook. Part of the, part of what came out of the forum was how many pieces, where should Plainfield build? How much, how much housing do you want? And that's a really important question, because there's no sense saying we want all the housing we could possibly build. Or we don't want to, I don't think we want to be, we don't want any more housing. Somewhere in the middle there is the happy medium and that's really the discussion that's got to get had. So there we are on the town plan, just keeps, keep it simmering on the back burner. And, but we do need to keep working on the subdivision, which leads us to the options for waivers, because as Karen, this is probably right up in Karen's wheelhouse, where we just give waivers all the time because we specify things. So you're queued up here, you're muted, but you're queued up.
We, we gotta, we gotta get a handle on the waivers. I mean, that's really all I can say. And I think, I think we're really, you know, going down the barrel with a waiver for the bearish.
Karen, Karen, can maybe you just, we're losing you a little bit.
It's my husband.
Oh, they all gaming?
It's this auctionage machine.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I don't know how to help this. I'll take away the video, see if that works.
Take away the video.
Okay, okay. Um, you know, with the bearishes, you know, you know, we're almost into a year. Actually, we're into a year with that, dealing with waivers. And I've been having some conversations with the guy who's in charge of the Bancroft Inn, that's what we're going to call it. And, you know, and we're talking about like 15 units, you need one and a half per unit. You know, we're talking, you know, 20 some odd parking spaces in the town of Plainfield. Really even waiving them, but where are they going to go or where, you know what I mean? So it was like, I think probably I'm getting a sense from the planning, from the DRB that they're going to start tightening up on their waivers. But I don't know, we gotta, we gotta be, we gotta be careful with that. It's especially a problem right there at the blinking light.
Yeah, the parking's always, yeah, the parking's always been an issue in town. Like when, when Positive Pie opened, you know, they had to have so many parking spots and there's no way they can have them. So, you know, is, is the, you know, Montpelier, when they did the Dickey building, there are no parking spots with that building. They, they, they real, they realized the reality is there's only so much parking you have in the town. And if you enforce the existing rules, the only way to get anything is to have waivers. So maybe we should look at the parking requirements and specifically.
Well, you know, when I was talking to him, we were talking about purchasing properties. One of them is our lovely brown property, which is Rizley's. And I didn't realize it was a brown property, meaning it's got, you know, waste there. And he, and we also talked about purchasing Bill the Barber's old place. You know, the one that's falling down.
Yep.
Okay, not everybody know who Bill the Barber's place is, which is the old house.
One of the few barbers with Parkinson's disease.
Yeah, okay. And then I threw, I, I threw out this really crazy idea, which, you know, parking, we have lots of parking at Goddard. The number of parking spots they have at Goddard is far more than they need for what they're doing. The number of parking spots they have at Goddard is far more than they need for what they're doing. And, and you're talking about, you know, trying to get like the sidewalk and stuff to get from Plainfield to also up to the co-op. But boy, if there was a shuttle.
Yeah, yeah, a robo taxi is all you need.
Well, just, you know, I'm just saying like,
Yeah.
Goddard has a ton of par- I mean, I don't, this is just fantasy, you know what I'm saying, like,
Yeah, yeah.
Like, like every time everybody who comes from Goddard in a car, right, is just gonna make it worse. In Plainfield to go to like, you know, Positive Pie or whatever they're doing. I just know, I don't know, there's gotta be, I don't know, it was just a wild solution, but.
Joe, we, well, I, I suggested that, that, that they move the building back fifteen feet, and they're looking at that. And David, you know, said, you should just lease some land up the hill. I mean, it's good to have the requirement for parking, because it's driving i- interesting solutions, because certainly if I was renting an apartment in the, in the thing, I'd want to have a car within reasonable walking distance, and most people would too. So, it's good to have that requirement. But there's also the reality of what's possible. And, and I, I keep thinking of Positive Pie, that it just wasn't possible to have all the parking for that bigger restaurant. So, uh, I remember that they said, oh, we'll just have all our staff park over by the rec field, and I don't think that happens very often.
Well, the DRB.
It's.
The DRB waived parking for the granary as long as the nighttime stuff is up at the Plainfield parking ride.
Yup.
So, I mean, that's specific, but, I don't know.
A more convenient parking ride. Once the, once the buyouts happen, they, those, that, those properties can't be developed for housing, but I suspect that there's, might be some options for parking that would be pretty more convenient than the parking ride, the current parking rides. But.
Could be, yeah, we don't know how that works out, but that's certainly, I mean, that's how you gotta think. You gotta think about, you know, what the village is gonna be like if the buyouts happen the way we think they are. And then what, what's the best use for that area? And certainly additional parking is one of them.
I mean, I will say that I'm a lot more comfortable waiving parking requirements for, um, development in the lower village than I am for the inn, because it's across Route Two. And to imagine people who live on the far side of Route Two, parking in the village wherever they can find parking, and then at night walking up in a cross Route Two without even a crosswalk, is like, that to me is a whole other world of considerations that I would take in, you know, thinking about waivers. There is parking in the village. It, it's a matter of how far people are willing to walk. You know, lighting could help with that, but soon as you want a bunch of residents to be walking back and forth across Route Two for their parking spots, that to me is a much higher bar for someone across.
Absolutely, absolutely correct. Yeah, I, yeah, you, you can't, the Route Two intersection is, oh, part of moving the building back gives the, the intersection a little better sightlines, but that's sort of neither here nor there.
Well.
They're not gonna move the building.
That, you know, that was such a big part of that Route Two intersection project was how to actually deal with that building.
Yeah.
There were, one of the proposals, if not several of them, were saying that the front porch of the inn would be disassembled and then rebuilt after the project, just to even give them room to operate equipment. And.
They, they should put the porch in the back.
Yeah, totally, they should get rid of the porch and move it and.
Yeah.
I, I discussed this with, uh, you know, Christie Farms working with Mike on this, and, uh, she was not, she wasn't excited about that idea, but I, I think from what, what I'm getting from the Goddard people, um, they'll explore almost anything, you know, and, and the weirder it is, the more excited he'll get about it. You know, I, uh, you know, my idea was parking underneath, because it's framed, and the basement entrance on the Route Two side is framed.
Yeah.
I don't know. You know, I also pushed them to, um, involve themselves in the intersection issue, to try and work with Plainfield, assist Plainfield in talking to the, uh, V-Trans.
Yeah.
To do something, because I, I still think there's some interim, despite all the rules and regulations, uh, if there was a will, there would be a way beyond the big huge project, but, uh, that'll all, that'll all come to pass. If they get the grant, if Goddard gets the grant for the inn, I think they'll come up with a parking plan, whether it'll be a hundred percent of the spaces. I don't know, but, I don't know.
I could see waiving a few spaces, but what they're, what they currently have is, is insufficient.
I think, I think that they were up to eight, uh, spaces in the plan that they had, but, and they knew that that probably wasn't gonna fly.
Yeah.
And they were looking at other stuff and, then, you know, they, they, there, there might also be some other possibilities in the upper village park, you know, I, I look at, um, Peter Young's property, and, you know, there's, there's ten, there are probably fifteen or twenty parking spaces there.
Which one is that?
Uh.
The red.
Bio diesel.
Bio diesel.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, but you, you, Jesse's got a really important point about crossing Route Two, so.
Back to Cross Route Two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's, it's not that far.
Yeah.
There, that, that would be fairly reasonable. I mean, it might, it might be a determining factor on who was willing to rent the apartments, but, um, and he, uh, when we talked to John Broderick, John Broderick's, uh, lives in Plainfield and he's working with Goddard with Grant, he talked about, uh, uh, board of Grizzlies.
That, that's a good option.
Which, uh,
What is that?
That's a gas, uh, the auto repair.
Oh, yeah.
Which is, I theoretically opening again, but I haven't seen it open myself yet.
Yeah, well, it's yet to see how that's gonna survive, but it's, um, that's a, that's a really good option. And the other thing is, you know, Mike knows that if, if he has apartments with no parking, they're just not that valuable. You know, you just, it's, it's just, uh,
Right.
Yeah, so he, the, it's in his interest to, to make this happen one way or another. Outside the, the regulatory framework, there's a real incentive to have that parking. But the, but going back to the waivers, it's, it's the kind of thing where, you know, it, it's, like I say, it's good to have the regulations, but it's good to, you know, it, it forces some creative options for like the inn. But it, you know, for the bearishes and a lot of other, uh, developments in town, or that it, it, the DRB has, has, it makes the DRB's job a little harder, because they have to decide. It's essentially saying we're not gonna enforce this regulation.
I, I, I spent time looking at other, you know, looking at various towns, uh, subdivision regulation waiver, and I didn't, I didn't find anything that, they're all, they're all, uh, very judgmental, you know, they, they all bas- they all basically saying the same thing, you know, it, 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 the, the DRB can waive almost anything if they find that, uh, you know, it's still keeping with the town plan or,
Right.
doesn't, doesn't, uh, do anything in, in, uh, opposition to the town plan, you know, those kinds of things. I, I, I tend to be uncomfortable with that open language, but I couldn't find anything better. It's pretty tough. It's kind of like the nature of a wave.
It, it, it is, and, and, and I guess you can say if it does no harm, you know, but that's, it, it, part of the DRB is that it's local discretion. It's, you know, it's people in the town trying to decide what, what's gonna work, and having the ability to be flexible. So it's a good idea, but it, it's, I don't know. It's, it's a two, it's a double-edged sword, for sure.
So I just, I just wanted to say that it also, the waivers depend on the makeup of the board. Cause I've served, I've served the zoning administrator under a lot of different makeups of the DRB. And there, there has been very conservative to very not conservative waiving. Um, and that's one of the hard things is like when people ask me if they can get a waiver, I always have to say, it depends, depends largely on, like, we had a, we had a DRB, not grant waivers. Um, they were fairly conservative in their waiver granting, and they were on both sides of the spectrum of the political forum. Sarah Albert, Robert Bridges. You know, you would know what I'm talking about, Will, like.
I do.
So that's the other, the other thing is that then the political part of comes into play. And the willingness to or not to grant waiver. So, just my experience over the bunch of years, but, was there something else on the agenda?
No, no.
Can't remember.
Uh, uh, well, I have, I have one other thing, and, uh, it's, it's not vital, but I, my, my Gmail is getting filled up. And I went back and looked at it, and it's almost all else, a lot of it is planning commission stuff, so I asked Bram for a town email, and it's like planning commission one at, at Vermont Gattav. And I don't think I'm gonna use it for, to get the emails, because my e- my personal email's out to all these other organizations. But what I can do, eh, I haven't done it yet, but I think I can get all those planning commission town-related emails and send them to that email, and then look at them there, and it won't clog up my personal email. I mean, I just don't want to spend the extra two, five bucks a month or whatever it is to increase my Google storage, I just, I'm just gonna get another account. But eh, 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 any other members, like Karen's got a ZA, a town ZA account. And if either of you, Jesse or David, wanna have a, that planning commission number, whatever, at Vermont Gattav, we can set you up with that. Let me see how it works first.
Yeah.
Yes.
But it would just, if you're getting more and more information, you know, up to, I, 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 I mean, it's, it takes a while to get to fifteen gigabytes. But you can be done, because of the document size. So if you start sending all these bigger documents and plans back and forth, that's what, that's where I'm at, and I'm gonna send all those over and get it, and then I'll just sign in and keep that active the way Karen does with her zoning administrator. Yeah, so, I, I haven't done it yet, I'll, I'll play around with it, but either, um, eve- if either you or Karen can have a planning commission, she could have four or five email addresses. I, I, I don't want that. So I'm just tossing that out.
Okay.
That's all I had on the agenda, um.
I, I do wanna, I do wanna bring up Mike Davison again.
Yup.
So Sandy and Mike met with you and I, Will, right?
Yup.
And we started a process, and then he took a left-hand turn and went into dealing with the Bancroft Inn.
Yup.
And I wrote an email to Sandy, Mike, to say like, hey man, we gotta start this process again, because the guy who's supposed to be designing the studies building into a hotel wants to know whether or not he needs a permit, which of course he does. So, some, for some reason, you've had more, you know, like, okay, I let them have their liquor license, but they haven't come in, you know what I mean?
Okay, okay, so you, you, you need follow-up. Okay.
Right, and they're not responding, he, I just sent them, you know, you can try.
Okay, I will, I will, the, the person to contact is Sandy. Uh, I've been talking with them about the uh, neighborhood development, you know, the boundary expansion, which I got all the pieces together. And that, that meeting is next week, I'm just gonna join it, um, uh, remotely, but I will get in touch with, I was hoping, um, Sandy and, and, and Mike were getting together, but, um, I will get on that, because there also is a discrepancy in the wastewater department, where the Water and Wastewater Commission, um, when they told Mike, when he, when, when the ownership changed, there was, uh, previously Goddard had twenty percent of the total capacity of the plant in perpetuity. Which, which Mike thinks he has, and the wastewater commission says they, he doesn't have. And I don't know where that is, um, I think it might take more than one or two discussions to work that one out. And I want to find out where that one is.
Okay, so I just, for some reason, when you back at them, they're more, whatever.
Well, I, I've been working at them for this NDA, because they want that, but I will, I will certainly get in touch with Sandy, and, and Mike is, is, his, his personality is, is, is go, and, and his, his work, um, format goes in multiple directions at the same time and, and seems very confusing to most other people.
Right, and so I just, I mean, I, I want, I'm not saying what, bang, bang, crash, bang, but I'm just saying,
Yup.
Keep talking, keep the process going, keep working on it, and they sort of like went away.
Okay, I'll bring them, I'll bring them back.
All right, thank you.
Sure. Um, I, I just, does, I guess we'll, the next meeting was one of, uh, November, just before Election Day, I'll put on updates on the agenda, and then if anybody has any, any specific items, just get in touch with me, or if you have something now, I'll, I'll, I'll just put it on the agenda for next time. If, if we're good, then I guess we can have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, in a second?
Yeah, in a second.
Okay, all was in favor?
Hi.
Oh, yeah, okay, I'm not trying to keep things, I'm trying to do a little more Robert's Rules kind of stuff.
Hey, Swer, Will.
What's that? I've gone November, November fourth. No, I'll be here for the next meeting.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I'll be, I'll probably be zooming for the next meeting, but I'll be in town, because I, we, we fly out Election Day, for, on the fourth, if.
You keep a car, do you keep a car out there?
Yeah, yeah, I drive my car up there, and Cory picks it up, and Cory actually drives my car all winter, because his car is, it's, you know how it is as a parent.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a car out there, we're not, it's a forty-hour drive, and no, not doing that.
Yeah, yeah, tell me about it.
Yeah.
You know, we, it's a twenty-four hour drive for us, and it's.
The, the beauty of a, of a car in Arizona, it doesn't rust. It's amazing, amazing. Every bolt turns when you go to work on it. I've never seen anything like it.
Heard about that.
Okay, thanks, everybody.